Okay, so I'm calling the August 1st, 2023 meeting of the Village of Rhinebeck Planning Board Order. Our acting chair is indisposed tonight, so we're one man short, but we'll proceed anyway with a quorum. The first item on the agenda is a sign permit for hemp ability. Timely Signs of Kingston is here to represent.
Good evening.
Hello.
How's everybody doing tonight?
Good.
We're here to apply for some signage for 23 East Market Street, which is the Rhinebeck Bank Plaza. This is an existing business in Rhinebeck Village currently at Piper's property, Montgomery Row, page one, and they are moving to this new location. Some of the signage that we're proposing is being repurposed from this existing building, namely the two wall signs on either side of the door. New signs include simply some door lettering, some lettering above at the top of the picture window, and a panel, a double-sided panel that will be mounted on an existing hanging bracket. The square footage is based on a linear frontage of that section of the building. I think it's really straightforward if you have any questions.
No lighting?
No, there is no lighting on any signage.
Okay. And can you explain again, just for anybody who might be interested, what sort of business this is? There's no...
They offer CBD products.
Right.
I'm not an expert in that. It's not something that I use or know that much about, but I do know that it is neither a dispensary or a smoking lounge.
Okay, that's just, I wanted to get that on the record.
Sure.
So it's an existing building extending to a different building?
Yeah, pretty much. I think it's...
Jim Atkinson's office is gone.
What?
It's occupying Jim Atkinson's office. He's gone.
Okay.
Moved over from the back of Montgomery Row.
Right.
I think it's just a visibility issue. I mean, he's kind of tucked. Right now, he's tucked in the far corner of Montgomery Row. I think he's just gonna have a lot more foot traffic in Rhinebeck Plaza. It's just more central location. The opportunity arose for him to take it and he made the leap.
Does anybody see any issues with this?
No, just a question, Paul. The assumption is it's a 32-foot frontage, therefore 16 square foot is allowed, but most of what's there, you're saying, will remain?
There's nothing there right now.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so I just want to let you know that everything there is new to that frontage of the building. I'm just saying the two signs on either side of the door are pre-existing at Montgomery Row and were permitted by me two years ago. We're just gonna relocate those over. So they're really the only new signage. We're trying to repurpose what he had for continuity and also just from a value proposition. They're still in great shape and can be reused.
So the new sign is then would be the door and window decal?
And yeah, the small hanging sign. You'll see that because of the size of the sides on either side of the door, the size of the hanging sign is about half the size of what Jim Atinson's or Century 21. That was, we did that, I think, three times at some point over the course of the years, but it's about half the size. And that's a result of basically devoting a lot of the square footage to the signs that he already owns and making sure that those can be reused. But fortunately, the word hemp ability is more linear width-wise than it is height-wise, so it worked out for him.
Okay, so then those two existing signs that you're gonna relocate are these, these two, the 19 by 30?
Well, I have a copy of that. Yes, the wall signs are each four square feet.
Okay, and the bigger one here, the 4.6, is a hanging sign?
That's the hanging sign.
And the, what about the, okay.
So the door, yeah, we ran out of space in there.
Okay, it all adds up to 15.96 or whatever you're discussing. Okay.
So we've backed out the signs?
Yeah, they set it up.
And there's no A-frames or Sandwichport signs or any of that sort of stuff permitted?
We will be, I don't think the permanent signage is gonna be ready for tomorrow. He believes he's gonna open tomorrow. I don't know if that's the case or not. That's what I've been told. We did prepare a temporary sign that will go inside the window glass that will be removed upon the installation of the permanent signage. That may go up for a period of time. I would say maybe a week before we have the signs done to go in here.
Yeah, I'm just talking about some people in that plaza have tried to put up Sandwichport signs to pull people into the plaza off the main sidewalk, and he should be aware that that's not permitted in the village.
Everyone who calls my office from Rhinebeck is notified that they are illegal. Every single person. I just want to let you know, I give you my word. Whether they choose to get it from Amazon or somewhere else and put it up, I can't control that. They are informed of that.
And they are also putting a directory sign.
Yeah, the last page of our presentation, while this is really not his responsibility, the last page of that will show that where Jim Atinson's or Century 21's on the Rhinebeck on the Rhinebeck Bank Plaza sign, there is a tenant. It doesn't count towards his square footage. This is a pre-existing sign and there are approved for that square footage. I put it on there more for the client, but you know, Rhinebeck Bank, that's a separate. I'll just update that.
Which document is that for?
It should be the last page of the presentation, the PDF. Did we take that?
PDF? I got four documents.
It should be the last page of the PDF, yeah. All the way down, right there.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that will be changed.
Possibility.
Yep. Any other issues? Have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second, Jeff.
Okay, motion second. Paul loves a favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
We'll send photos, Ryan.
Thank you. So that's the only item on the agenda. We have a discussion item.
Jeff, do you pass these to the acting chair?
What am I?
So as listed here is the contractor for 6467 Montgomery Street will go before the board to present concurrent conditions of the front porch. We didn't get any preview of this, I don't think, so we're taking a look at it for the first time, or at least I am.
I took a few photos today, and here's one.
All right. So this is, oh, this is on the main drag.
Yeah.
On 9 North, on the left-hand side going north out of town.
Yes.
Before you turn into Village Green.
Yes.
It's the house with the shipping containers on it.
Yeah, they've been before us before. You get a deck at the back and some windows replacements.
Changed the railing one time.
Yes. So how does the front porch work into this equation?
It's just at a deficient state, and we want to replace it as it stands right now. As you guys can see from the street, it'll be reworked. The upper upright posts, which are structural, are gonna be done over in eight-quarter mahogany.
So we're talking about the deck, not the...
The deck and the uprights are bad as well. They go up and down, the vertical. They are structural posts. They're decorative and ornamental, but they are definitely structural. That's why they're keeping it up.
So you're gonna be able to replicate those?
Yes.
Exactly.
Yes. Gonna pull one out and take it back to the shop and do it in eight-quarter mahogany. So it's gotta be eight-quarters just to support it.
And the horizontals?
As of right now, they should be able to stay. As I say, they don't seem to have any deterioration at all. The verticals are missing pieces here and there, and they are tired.
So you're replacing the...
Framing lumber.
Lumber, the deck and the steps?
Yes.
And recreating these?
Yes.
Four columns.
Yep.
And this is like...
There's actually a little side column. Technically, they're kind of like almost six when you look.
Yeah, so each one's a 90-degree?
Right, that is correct. It gives the creativity on the corners.
What's the material you'll use for the decking?
Tungarooh mahogany.
And the steps, too?
Mahogany dredge.
And the steps are gonna be replaced as well, I see. Now, what's going on with the cornice?
It needs primer paint.
Okay. Like there was new wood put in there?
Yeah, when they did the roof system, yes. Which wasn't with me, but yes.
Last time I walked by there, it had a funny-looking pitch on the roof. Is that original?
Yeah, as far as I know, yes. I didn't have anything to do with the roof, so I don't...
So the roof hasn't been changed?
They did stuff with the roof, but it wasn't with me, so.
Yeah, you can't see it in any of these pictures, but from the street, it looks odd. It doesn't look like a standard hip. It's sort of shed with a cutoff somehow.
Like a stump, like a grab stuffer on the sides, almost, to porch roof.
Yeah.
I would agree with you.
It's odd. You barely see it, but you do see it.
And I think what really grabs your eye right now is you have unprimed wood, unprimed and unpainted, and it grabs your eye a lot more.
Yeah. And it looks to me, you know, you have very fancy decorative elements, and then the cornices like blah.
Yeah, there is a crown molding. It actually reads in there, but you can't read it right now just because if nothing else is shown.
It looks undersized or offset, or it looks odd.
Yeah. The original trims are still in there, as I say, which is, they replaced the fascia and even calibrated to save their other moldings.
But they saved the molding?
Yeah, the moldings are still in there.
But they didn't appear to line it up properly or something?
No, that's an extra, like a raised flashing on the edges.
Okay.
So.
Because there seems to be, like, a valley in here instead of having a pitch coming down.
Right, I was gonna say.
It looks like water would accumulate there.
Overage, but yeah.
Yeah. So that's interesting. So as John pointed at this thing, it looks like there's one here, too. Is that what this thing that's sticking up on the left side is?
Let me look through. Yeah, if you look at number four in the folder, I would agree with you.
It's an odd situation. I don't know. I can't get close enough. I didn't wanna...
Yep.
You'd have to have a ladder to go up there and see what it actually, what happens there in terms of molding and drainage, but it looks strange. Now, as far as I know, what you're doing is replication in kind.
That's what we're trying to do, absolutely. Yes, that's our plan.
Then that doesn't need site plan approval, is?
That's why he's here and has a discussion item.
Okay. So if you're 100% replacing existing conditions, existing rot essentially?
Yep, exactly.
It's exactly what it is on the photos. I don't think that needs a site plan amendment because we've already had a site plan on the property. Because anybody can go out and replace a rotten board.
This is just a whole super, you know, you're basically dealing with a lot more superstructure.
And because of the decorative elements.
And I thought that'd be the right thing to do to, you know, just approach the board.
Significant without those columns and so on.
Yeah, the columns are the hard part because, you know, a lot of people could botch those.
Absolutely.
And so how do we have confidence that you and I have botched them? That's the question.
As I say, we're taking one out, and we're gonna take it back to the shop and do it again. That's all.
All right. Can you take up close-up photos of one, sample ones, so that we have documentation?
There should be one in that folder with you, number, I think it's number five or number six.
Oh, keep going.
Number six.
Okay. They can say they're significant checks. It looks good from the street, but not from up close.
No, as I say, they need love. The whole thing needs love.
And they're pegged.
H E O R I C O U R T. I can, I can make that to Jeff.
You're Mike Haracord.
Yes.
H E O R I C.
No, H E R I C.
H E R I C.
Oh, you were.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
So these are pegged at the joints, so that means that they are old and original?
Yes, they are.
Because they just don't do that anymore. Are you gonna peg them?
That's the plan.
Good. So what is the board's direction on this? That we should have at least documented a full photographic display of these decorative elements, just so we have it documented, so we can see sort of before and after and make sure that if it's not right, we can come back at you. But other than that, I don't...
So you want a full shot of the front columns, then?
Yeah.
Okay. We gave you a close-up, but do you want a full view?
Yeah, full view, and then maybe if you, you know, if you wanna do segments like this, if it doesn't show well enough in the full view, you could do segments. But I just wanna make sure that in the long run, because this is fairly tough to do.
Oh, yeah.
I'm an old woodworker. I know. This is not easy. There's a lot of ways in this thing could split and everything, and making it out of mahogany is, is good a material you can get for this sort of thing. Does anybody think that there's anything else we should do?
No, as you mentioned, John, it's like the light, and as long as there's photographic evidence and it's, you know, appropriate materials.
And just make sure that all the dimensions are the same, too, so that the thickness of the deck is the same, the thickness of the cutouts are the same and everything, so it's a real exact match. And other than that, I happen to know the owners of this, and they're pretty good about such things, about getting good quality workers, and they own the house next to me. And I'd love to see this thing finished, so you can get rid of those pods out of the side yard. I'm amazed that the neighbors have put up with that because it's been a long, long time that those containers have been out there.
I would agree.
So do you have any sense of when the containers are gonna go?
I can't answer for them. I don't even know what's in them, so I don't...
Anyway, you could pass one to the owners that...
Absolutely, I will.
That we would like to see those gone sooner rather than later because it's been, I don't know, two, three years.
Say three plus.
Maybe they can move them to their house next to you.
Just a fair amount of news.
All right, so we can hold on to these?
Yeah, absolutely.
So that we have documentation, evidence, and we need to pass any sort of resolution or anything?
But I will.
So just let it be known in the minutes that what we've agreed to, that he's gonna photograph, he's gonna make the dimensions of all the lumber the same as the original, that it's replication in kind, and that...
Mahogany decking and steps.
And yeah, mahogany materials. Anything else?
No.
Thanks for coming in. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Because most people, you don't just knock things down and then come to us later.
No, thank you.
I always had that happen. Never saw.
All right. Mr. Chair, we have an additional discussion item.
Okay.
Amanda, can you hand these to John?
All right, what's this about? Look at it, let me touch it. Plans.
I think the main thing is the picture.
What's the address of what I'm talking about?
60 South Street. We just closed yesterday, so we're new villagers, even though we've lived in the town for eight years. So the windows in the house are new in the sense that they're not historic windows. Not the owner we just bought from, but the Naps, I don't know if they've lived here. They've lived in the house for 70 years, I was told. Someone in that family replaced the windows. When they did that, they wrapped the exterior of the window trim and the sill in aluminum, I don't know what you'd even call it. It's like paper thin. Yeah, and it looked almost like a modern sort of how you would trim a window now, but they covered the historic window frames. When I had my painter come to give me an estimate for the paint, he was sort of asking, do you, I didn't even notice that they were aluminum. He asked, do you want to keep it this way? Do you want to change it? Like, do you want me to, like, paint the wood underneath? And I was like, oh, yeah, totally. I want the wood. And then when I asked Ryan, you know, I gave him a list of things I hope to do to the house eventually, and this seemed to be like a sticking point where it wasn't like, oh, man, they get a building permanent. It wasn't like you need a site plan. It was like, you can take one window off. And so we did that, and the frame, the trim, the sill is all there. They just covered it. Now, because it's a modern window and a historic window, you know, opening, there's like a little, it's like that narrow of space between the window that bulges out slightly and the trim. And so my contractor was like, I would just put like a thin, flat piece of trim covering that channel, if you will, and like, that's it. And then we would just scrape and paint.
A stop, a window stop, just to deal with it?
Yeah, just to make sure, like, no water gets in there, you know, because now, because they're in good condition. It's just a scrape and a paint. And I believe they're all like that, but I guess what I would propose is that, obviously I can't get up on a ladder, but I would propose that I be allowed to remove all of the aluminum wrapping until I get to, you can, guys can tell me, I get to some point where you're like, we want you to stop. Like, if anyone could replace a rotting board, I would ask that maybe I be allowed to. I would just make them all look the same. I don't want to change how the house looks. So now that we know what that one looks like, they should all look like that, no matter what I find underneath any of them, is what I would propose.
And you can get the cladding off without disturbing the siding? In other words, it's not under the siding?
Oh, no, it's not. It's like caulked or something. Like, it's like you can peel it off. There's a little, like, nail, like a tack, almost, like...
Like a painted aluminum nail?
Yeah, like that tacked it into the trim, but that's it. It's not under the siding.
I don't think we have any problems with removing the aluminum cladding.
And this way, no one can ever put it back on. You can't do it anymore.
There's like these, from the photo, like, I don't know how recent this photo is online.
So this, I think she tried renting the house in, like, maybe in the pandemic, even like that she went to Europe and just wanted to rent it.
Does it wrap over these head pieces as well?
No, so like, I'm not really good with historical terminology yet. The lip that comes up above, it is not there. That is painted to, like, blend in with the frame. And on the side of the house, I took off the one on the side of the house at the bay window. The lip is painted brown to match, like, this color. So you don't, I didn't even notice it was there until, you know, you remove it and then you realize it's like two-tone. So it doesn't go that high.
So in other words, so the windows look like they're basically, so what you'd expect, a rectangle trim, and that's wrapped in aluminum.
Right.
And there's an additional piece of trim, which is a little fancier, sticks out a little further, which doesn't have the aluminum on it.
Correct.
But removing the aluminum won't pull that piece off, if I'm hearing you correctly?
No.
You'll be able to pull this piece off and leave everything?
Correct. Again, it just did one window, and that lip, that trim piece was intact, was not covered.
Got it. Drip edge. It's, yeah, it's like a wood drip edge. Maybe, you know, maybe it looks like there's a little bit of crown under it in some windows, but if I'm hearing this correctly, it sounds like that isn't clad, so the cladding just butted into it rather than then having to get that off and reapply it.
Right, and even the, and even the window sill part, I mean, it's like there's this big kind of box that they put on, but it's like, you can like, you can lift up each one. It's not even caulked underneath. It's just really...
And the original, that like sills under there?
Yeah, exactly. It's, I don't know how to, it's like a dummy window trim.
Yeah.
So you didn't have to paint.
Space-age material.
Yeah, and so they could hide, I think, the gaps from the modern windows, you know what I mean? Because they, because they fit just enough, you know?
So they didn't quite fit, so they...
Yeah, I mean, well, they're just like, because my contractor would really go with old homes. Casey Van Borghy, his mom works in the town, like, he, like, he was explaining it to me, and he was like, this is why they did this. So just to hide that little gap.
There's an additional item with the doors. Do you want to go over about the doors now, Amanda? Because I did, I did print those off from the board.
Well, I'm not, I guess now that I'm in the house, because the woman we bought her from, she didn't really want me, like, going in. Like, you know, you look at a house and you remember it one way, and then four to six weeks later, you buy it, and then you're like, oh. So I think there's two, there's a back, there's one back door that is just like a thick glass wood storm door. I actually don't think I'm gonna change that one because I think that's really the only kind of door that could go there. I just changed the doorknob. She has like one of those modern, like, little levers, and I would make it look more historic, brass. There's a side door that I would want to change, and then the front door I do want to change also. I wouldn't have changed it except the window has one of those, there's blinds in the middle of the window, do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And it's just not, it's not, it doesn't look right. So, and the front door has a storm door on it that is, I just bumped into it on my way into the house with some boxes and a screw popped out. It's just like, it should just be a wood from like door jamb, you know, how like all the historic homes have like wood, nice storm doors. That's what it should be. And I sent you a picture of that, but I'm not, I don't want, I'm not like there yet with which door I'm picking. It's gonna be some version of any kind of door you see on a well-done historic home, if that makes sense. But it's, I want the front door to be probably full, full light. So I think that's kind of like...
Well, to replace the door, I think they would have to come back to us.
Yeah.
With a picture of what you're gonna put in.
Right, like, so that's what I'm saying. Like, once I pick the door, I can come back and be like, this is the door I want, and this is the storm door, and including the side door. I think, can I change the knob to the back door without coming back here?
Yes.
Thank you. And then the exterior lights also was another thing, Ryan, I don't, that you said I needed a site plan for. There's one light under the porch, like, it's on a porch, like the hangover on the front door, and that same light is on the side door. I mean, I would, I would just want to change out the fixture.
All right, well, when you decide on the door and the fixture, you can come back.
As a discussion item, or...
Or just get on the agenda for a site.
Or do I have to...
Yeah, there's a lot of, like, the roof. You're gonna replace the roof with the, you're gonna take off the asphalt roof and replace it with a metal roof?
Yeah, that I understand, that I understand you need a building permit for. Do we need a site plan for it?
But yeah, a site plan, because it's in the historic district, so we want to make sure it's not.
Wait, Ryan's shaking his head.
We've never asked, I mean, asphalt, metal, standing seam, we've always let that go. I mean, with Elijah's house on the corner, all, he applied for a building permit.
And I think the roof might even be exempted in your laws from the site plan.
Well, but still, it's in the historic district, so...
No, I'm talking about the historic.
Yeah, I think there might be a roofing that's not covered.
It's not.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, we shouldn't have exempted the house directly across the street from me. They tore off the roof, the metal roof, and they put a tar paper roof on the house.
Yeah, I'm...
In the historic district, which should never have been allowed, but...
So that's not me, and I'm not gonna do that, and I'm just gonna do a standing seam roof.
Right, but, but I think you need a site plan, because you're talking about restoring...
No, the, okay, I might not, I gave Ryan a list of my wish list, okay? The porch might be $25,000, in which case I'm not doing it in the next 12 to 18 months.
Okay.
I'm just not. The roof is exempted from needing a site plan, and I will get a building permit for it. And the lights and the door, when I asked Ryan, my familiarity with site plans is like, plot where all the buildings are and like, look at where everything is. And to me, the lighting and the doors is more like, here's what it looks like now, here's what I want to, here's what I want to put there, and you guys tell me, yeah, that's, that's great, or no, we don't like that.
Yeah, you don't have to hire an architect to do it.
Right, that's why I'm like thrown by the word site plan. I will do that, what I just described, but I don't know how else to convey to you what I want to change with lighting and a door other than that.
So right now, you're just asking about windows?
Correct, because my painter has a week of time, the 3rd week of August, to do this for me.
Not the, not the roof on the house, not the roof on the owners, not the gutters, not the porch rebuilding? Painting and electrical is up to you.
No, I'm gonna call me, I like do things in pieces. I'm gonna be before you for like forever.
So then again...
It'll be saving you time if you made decisions in certain packages, so that you get three or four things.
Then I would be a completely different person, but yes, no, I agree. I agree.
Because I think there is a fee for each site plan, right?
Yeah.
No, I get it. The site plan stuff, though, I could probably narrow down. The building permit stuff, I think, is simple enough. I have to get with an electrician to see if I could even move the electric from the front of the house to the side of the house, you know? I don't know if any of these things are possible or what they cost yet. I know what the roof costs, and I know what the gutters cost, so that is easy to get a building permit for it, but I haven't picked the color yet, so it's like...
Yeah, roof material changes are exempted here.
But it's gonna be a gray.
So then, just back to the windows then.
Yes.
So you've got this aluminum, like, channel that goes around the outer window?
Yes.
Trim boards, and remove that, and the idea is to restore, if needed, the underlying wood, look like, look like four-inch wide or whatever?
Correct.
And you mentioned that there's a gap, and he's gonna fill some kind of...
No, I'm asking you if, so between the, the window, let's say, comes out, like, I don't know, a half inch, I could be wrong about that, and the trim, where the window ends and the trim starts, there's... And the trim, yeah, where the window ends and the trim starts, there's like an eighth of an inch gap all around the window.
Between, between the window and the clapboard?
Between the window and the trim, between the actual physical window.
I think you're talking about between the sash and the trim.
Sorry, my terminology is horrible.
Oh, so basically it's an interior piece of trim inside the.
At the edge of the window sash.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, yeah, like, he would.
I thought that at first, but I don't think, because I'm sorry.
Am I not, I'm not saying it, right?
Yeah.
No, I don't have a picture, because when Casey came today, he was just like, this is what I would do. He wanted, he wants to cover the gap, so you don't see it and so it would otherwise protect that, that, from accumulating water or let's say like an insect making a hive in it.
Could I ask you the question? So if I'm looking, this is your window, right? And I'm looking at it like, my head is on the siding, you know?
Okay.
This is the window, you know, I'm looking out the window right now.
Okay.
If I'm looking at it like this, are you suggesting that this is sticking out, like, the yellow is the window trim? Are you suggesting the window sticks out further than the trim in this way? Or are you suggesting that if this is the trim, there's a little airspace around the window?
Let me see, I want to look at the trimcher. It's in front of the sash.
The trim is, it is in front of the sash, like triple, so yeah.
The trim is in front of the sash.
I think we're talking about a, a jam, a stop is what I think we're talking about, a wood piece that would go around that gap.
Yeah, on the inside of.
Yes, like you can.
Trim.
Which is typical.
Okay, is it, like, you can kind of see it well in this, like, this is the window sill, this like shaded the shade? That's the, the gap I'm talking about.
Got it.
And it goes all the way around the window. And Casey just recommended that we use a flat piece of trim all around, like, just nondescript, you know, like, nothing.
Hey, once it's painted, no one orders standard.
Right.
It sounds like you want the order to standard size window and it didn't quite fit the opening.
That.
And therefore there's a little bit of an airspace.
Yes.
Probably caulked or something.
Right, so you'd want to insulate that and then put a piece of wood over it and paint everything, so it, and add a little bit of a detail and look like it.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, that's pretty common in this situation.
So if we're just talking about the windows.
Yes, just the windows.
I don't think there's any action other than the note in the minutes that she came in, we had a discussion, we agreed that she could take the aluminum cladding off and fill in the gap with a wood trim.
But if, because I haven't looked at every window, right? I'm going to, if I see rot or something, or one is fully missing for some odd reason, they're all going to look like this.
Yeah, you can replace it in kind.
Right, and, and but.
If you have rotten wood, you can put a new piece of wood in that matches the same dimensions.
Exactly.
And is painted the same color.
Okay.
As the rest of the windows.
Yes. And do I need a building permit for any of this?
For all of the window, for all the window work and anything else?
Well, I'm just talking about the, what we were just discussing, removing the aluminum, trimming it and maybe repairing rot, rotten, no.
It seems like maintenance today.
Okay, I just want to make sure in case someone asks what I'm doing and why am I?
Just, just to circle back though to the whole light, lighting thing. The village is a dark skies, uh, community.
Okay.
So what that means is that deals with the lumens level of lighting and that the, the, the village asks or requests, especially in the historic district, to have lighting fixtures that are shielded, that shield the light, that basically point the light down. I mean, there's a whole section, a whole lighting section that I can send you and it sort of explains kind of the fixtures to look at and the, and the, and the bulb size.
So I think two of the fixtures I would change point down because they're underneath like a overhang, so that probably wouldn't matter. And the other one is literally in my backyard, no one sees it, it's a barn light, so it already points down, but I'd probably replace that with, I don't know, I think Matthew Money Penny came before you all, he's my neighbor across the street and a friend, I'd probably just, like, he has like these box glass lights that I would just put in the back.
Those are fun.
So, but I will send you my lighting.
We just, we don't want floodlights and things.
Oh, that though.
Yeah. Either point up at the sky or point on the neighbor's property.
Yeah, no, we're.
And if it's under, I think what it is is seven hundred and fifty.
It's 120 dash 22 or something like that.
120. If you're below that, you don't have to worry about, so like porch lamps and things like that usually don't apply.
Yeah, there's just three exterior lights, so, um, it's not going to be hard for me to just show you guys what they are.
All right. So for the doors and the lighting, you should probably package them together when you're ready, show us pictures of what you're proposing, pictures of what's existing there and come in for one site plan approval.
Okay, so for that, I should fill out like a site plan application?
I think so.
Sure.
Replacement doors in particular.
Okay.
Um, but for this window trim and stuff, you should just go ahead and fix it up.
Great. Thanks.
Okay.
Amanda, what's your last name?
Miller.
Miller?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But he's a McGrath.
McGrath.
Chris McGrath.
Chris McGrath and Amanda Miller.
60 South Street.
Yeah.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thanks for coming in.
Bye.
All right, we have one, uh, another discussion item that unfortunately didn't make the cutoff for the deadline. Uh, Mr. Weckser and his, uh, engineer.
Architect.
Architect, Ray Nelson. Uh, this is a property located out on Wine Coop Lane. It's, uh, almost eight acres and I have printouts from Parcel Access as well, or we can use rays that are much more blown up. Uh, the reason, uh, Mr. Weckser is here is because he would like to develop this property and create a primary structure. However, where he wants to build exceeds the minimum and maximum requirements of a front yard setback.
Oh, yeah, we always run into that on Wine Coop.
Yes, so.
Because the Sanders are dealt with the older section of the village.
It'll be up to the board's decision.
It's all going together, I think I missed the max.
It'll be up to the board tonight whether to waive the front yard setback or ask Mr. Weckser and Mr. Nelson to come back in September with formal, formal application.
Which would require zoning varies.
Uh, if you guys choose to enforce that or you can formally waive it next month, it's up to you.
So you can say, you're, you're telling us under the provisions of consistent with neighbors.
The dimensional table that in the residential district, there has to be a minimum of 10 feet or a maximum of 25 feet and he's well beyond.
But there is a note, it says, notwithstanding the setback provisions established above, the planning board may permit structures in the residential district to be built anywhere within the setbacks as varied from the street of the two adjacent structures on the same side of the street. So is that what you're trying to say? We have the ability to waive?
That is discussion tonight, or if you want him to come back in a more formal application setting, it would, he'd have to come back in September.
Yeah, I still think we have to do that in a formal site plan procedure.
I was leaving it up to you guys.
It is a single-family home though, right?
Uh, it's going to be some sort of primary structure, but yes, it would be classified as a single-family.
And it's not in the historic district?
No.
So it wouldn't ordinarily come to us for site plan?
Correct, correct. It's just in this instance because of how far the property sits back from Wine Coop Lane and things like that is the reason why, uh, they're here tonight and they unfortunately missed the deadline.
I think we've done this before on other instances.
You have, it hasn't been this far back. Uh, you guys contemplated this for the one property on Mulberry Street. This is going back before the pandemic, like 2019.
Yeah.
Um, and you did it in one of the, one other instance.
And we didn't have a site plan, we just had a resolution to allow.
You just basically, resolution to waive that criteria, um, but it's up to you guys.
Yeah, well, at the very least, you're going to have to show us where the two adjacent neighbors are.
I didn't, I didn't put them on a drawing, but you can see my neighbor's way over here across the power lines and this neighbor in front of us is way beyond the 25 feet.
So the one neighbor I believe is Kaplan.
The village.
So where's your parcel?
This highlighted yellow parcel. And that's the village boundary there.
So you're already on a flag lot. And you're going to be way behind what anybody else is in the area because you're on a flag lot.
Yeah.
And that's a legal pre-existing lot?
Yes.
Well, there's no way you can be anywhere within the setbacks as measured the two, the two adjacent structures.
I was assuming that your setback would start from here, not from there anyway. Wouldn't you consider this the front yard if you were going to do some setbacks? I mean, it wouldn't be there.
I don't remember seeing anything in the code about flag law speak.
Yeah. The definition of front yard, yeah. So all the way down the entrance to here, so it's basically right about here.
Well, oh, yes, that's right. Yes. Sure, it's actually, yeah, it's kind of seen here, little square mark's out. It's odd, but like, there's like, yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of like midway between the distos and again, yes, here.
It's actually right in line with this house.
This house?
This house.
Oh, this house?
Yeah, yes, sorry.
So that would be a line of sight from.
From the adjacent parcel.
That's right.
There's definitely a yard, which is just the area between the lot lines and the required setbacks.
What is this?
That's the, yeah, that's the, um, uh.
Phergras.
O W, it's the onsite water treatment.
Okay, that's your septic?
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So are you in front or behind of this structure, do you think?
We're almost right in line with it, but we're away, we're on this side. This is a power line here, that's a power line here, we're right up, we're 80 feet or 50 feet from it.
So I think if you were to look at the two adjacent structures that would have, be in play here, it would be this one and that one, rather than this one and that one. So if you can, if you can prove that you're between the setbacks of these two structures, then I think.
These two?
Yeah. I think this could apply as measured from the street of the two adjacent structures on the same side of the street. Because this is certainly an adjacent structure to this lot. And this one, except for the power line, is probably the adjacent structure on the same side of the street.
Yeah.
Rather than the building in front.
It's almost.
This guy's in the town, not in the.
The house actually would sit right between those two properties, their houses.
Yeah, that's what it looks like to me.
Yeah.
But, you know, I think for us to formally waive it, we would have to have something plotted out on an aerial so that we know that we can justify saying it's no, it's somewhere between this one and that one, rather than behind both of them. Because that's what the law says, that we have to abide by.
Somewhere between it.
Yes, so from the street, this one is so much back, from the street, this one is so much back and you're supposed to be, in order to get this sort of waiver, is between those two. Not in front of both of them or behind both of them, or one of them.
If we're going to leave it right where it is, I can pretty much guarantee we're, we're behind that one.
Yes, but you're probably in front of this one.
No, 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 we're pretty much in line with that one.
We're right.
Well, I mean, I'm not going to confuse you, I'm trying to give you an idea.
Well, I appreciate that. But there's the, there's this high spot in the lot about here and we're kind of down on the hollow. And if you kind of look down the hollow, you can see this house.
Back here, you're in the park.
Yeah, so we, and once you get beyond this one.
And remember, it's distance from the street. It's not, it's distance from the street, not sort of lateral here. That's how it says it.
Yeah.
As measured from the street. So you can measure, you know, the street sort of curves this way, so that might make this distance more than the distance from here where you want to picture a lot, or your house.
Yeah, so if you're going to go from the street, we, we're clearly more by about, uh, maybe 80 feet. And then this one here, we're probably a little less by about 80 feet.
And the other problem is that you guys aren't going to meet till like the end of September. So that's why we're trying to.
September 5th.
September 5th.
Beginning.
Beginning. It's not that long, but.
Thirty-four short days away.
It looks like a relatively modest house for the size of the lot.
I mean, if they're really, if they're interested in plans, if you want to see them.
We don't have any authority to rule on them, but, uh.
The biggest problem is.
It's 20 by 40, it's a very modest house.
Yeah. And there's power lines that go through here?
Yeah, yeah, and, and here. The windows only all have a side, here's the porch. I don't remember, I didn't tell you, oh, yeah, it said on the zoning, how big square footage is it? Oh, it's hard to tell, I think it's percentage of the lot coverage, I don't know.
You have enough, you have almost eight, eight acres, you've got plenty.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You've got plenty.
Point zero 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 two percent.
Yeah.
Very small percentage of the lot coverage.
So I think to qualify for the waiver, um, it's got to be between the setbacks of the two adjacent structures as measured from the street.
How, how exact does that have to be? I guess on a scale of this size of lot, eighty feet isn't pretty much between.
Wait.
I mean, you know, we're in the village, I would say that's, okay, that's a problem, but out here.
Oh, no, I don't think it's a problem. I think we're willing to give you the waiver, we just have to be able to justify it on our law. Otherwise you have to go to a variance, which I'm sure you'll get, but it's just another.
It's a slow process, yeah.
And if somebody comes back to us, and some people can get cranky at times, to think that we're doing, we're being too lenient. If someone comes back to us, we need the documented evidence that we can point to[1550.66] If someone comes back to us, we need the documented evidence that we can point to and say, see, this is eighty feet, or seventy-five, or a hundred, or whatever, that we can, we can see the documented evidence.
So to qualify for this waiver.
Compared to these.
Yeah, you have to measure from the street to the front of this building, and from the street to the, probably the back of this building, or the front of this building. And your house has to be between those two somehow. Or at least no more than the second, the longer one.
Well, it sounds like it is, if you, you know, if you're eighty feet, forty feet in front of one and forty feet behind the other. Right, so you are between them, right?
You are between, yeah.
But we can't tell that from this aerial, because it's sort of a little bit undefined. You have this, which isn't exact, but that is.
True.
We don't have a distance from the street to there, or just from the street to there.
Right.
So if you can't, on the aerial, you know, you can measure distance on the counties.
Yeah, it's, it's a pretty, pretty much, you could scale it off of there, but.
Right. And if you can make the case that your setback of this house is more than one and less than the other, then I think we could waive it. Without any site plan or zoning board of appeals or anything else. If, if you can't make that case through measurements, then I think we have to.
You want me to make that case now with a scale? That's what you mean by?
Probably not, no, you're gonna have to come back September fifth.
Because they have to make that case to us? If, if, would they have to make the case to us to be granted that way? Or is that an actual waiver we'd have to grant, or could the building department say, we understand?
Says the planning board may permit structures in the residential district to be built anywhere within the setback, just million from the street.
So it's.
Now, we could agree tonight that if he could make the case to Ryan with measurements, then you could go ahead without waiting to the next planning board meeting, because we've authorized it.
Right, the concept makes sense.
Is it, is it from the street to the adjacent neighbors and he's somewhere in between?
Yeah, that's the wording, then we're good, yeah.
Yes, it would be a waiver with a condition for the record, and it would be in the minutes, and then we would just need you to satisfy actual dimension proof. And then that would be satisfying the condition that we agreed to.
I think we.
Yeah.
And we've done that before, I'm not sure if we did it without having an actual vote. But we could vote tonight to authorize Ryan on documentation as within the setback of the two adjacent houses. To authorize the.
I, I would just make one amendment to that chair, that there'd be additional oversight by the code enforcement officer to confirm the measurements and this conditional approval.
So.
Can we vote on a discussion item? Not to be that guy to ask that question, but, because this isn't an unofficial agenda item, are we allowed to do that?
I think we did before.
You have before.
Okay.
As I remember, it's considered a waiver and we can just do it by a vote of the, of the board.
Of the board president.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't see why we have to wait.
Just wanna make sure it's procedurally sound, too.
Okay. So a motion to authorize the zoning enforcement officer, the planning board clerk, to allow a building permit to go forward on this single-family home if it can be documented that the proposed location, as measured from the street, is between the two adjacent structures on the same side of the street.
I'll second the motion, chair.
All the favor?
Thank you, gentlemen. Served the community.
We don't want to hold up people if we don't have to.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you're here. You're in the gym. Thank you, Ryan.
You're welcome.
Any other?
Yes, this one's from me. Have a good night, guys, we'll, we'll be in touch.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So right now, CVS has contracted with a company to address some of their lighting issues in their parking area. So one parking pole or lamp, whatever you wanna designate it as, was knocked over.
Yeah.
I believe snow removal, it was related to something to snow removal or a truck backed up and knocks it over.
Been down for a long time.
And at the moment, they just wanna replace that one pole right now. They are potentially looking to replace others in the parking area, but I did mention that that would most likely trigger site plan approval, because obviously when CVS moved in, they had to have had a lighting plan, and it's also, I would say, a pretty sensitive low location.
Yeah.
You know, where it is. But their initial proposal, when I reviewed it, they were way over the lumens light level. They were like at twelve to fifteen thousand lumens level for the lights. So I sent them the lighting section of the code, and this is what they returned. So there's two copies of the new lamp pole, as well as two proposals for the light bulb that they're gonna use within there. I said, you know, possibly just being one, that you guys would need then to come before you, that potentially this could be covered over a building permit, but I wanted to discuss it with, with the full board before any final confirmations or decisions were made. So that's the new light lamp, they're proposing some Victorian style, and they've altered the light bulb itself, I believe to accommodate the lumens level and us being dark skies compliant and, and community.
And we don't know what's out there right now, how does this matches?
Uh, is it, I believe what's out there now is a glossy or smoked lamp. That's the glass, I believe. Up, it's, it would be up, it'd be way up almost by the big bellies and the park there, and the, and the one parking area closer to East Market. And then I think there's another one all the way back by the dumpster area. This one would go right, right where the pylons are and that fence sort of separates the back of the Fraley building and.
Yeah, right where the sidewalk goes along the fence.
Yes, exactly. Yes. I mean, they would still be required to acquire a building permit for this, but I wanted to bring it before the board to make sure that it doesn't affect our lighting code and it, and it doesn't affect, you know, it creates, you know, light pollution.
Well, if the, if they're compliant with the lighting code, what can we say about it?
I mean, that's what they're claiming, I, I don't know, I would leave that up to the board.
It looks like it's a pretty good replica of what they've got.
It's hard, I mean, it looks exact to me.
Yeah.
I mean, they might have had the records when they put it in, and they just went back and said, give us the newest model, there you go.
Right. And it is dark sky compliant?
Supposedly it's dark sky.
I always, I never trust these things. It says night sky. It doesn't say dark sky compliant, it says I E S, international, what is that?
I don't know.
Cut-off type three.
So my question is, what say do we have in this? In other words, if the Z E O, if the building department and Ryan and the Z E O review all of the documentation and satisfy themselves that it is compliant and is within code, I don't see how they can't be awarded a permit. Is there any clause that requires the planning board to approve lighting poles?
Well.
Locations?
Well, no, they're gonna put it in the same spot, the same.
Same spot.
As the one before, and it appears to be as close as you can to replacement in kind. And they're gonna upgrade it to be dark sky compliant.
And I'm with you, that should be confirmed.
Yeah, that's the only part that I would like to see, make sure that they can confirm, because.
Yeah.
Everything, they, I've looked at a lot of these specs, but they all come up with their own names. They don't say dark sky compliant or consistent with the dark skies. They call, or their own trade brand, night sky, it's night sky. Opti-shield, Louver Optic System. Now, it does say I E S, and I, that sounds familiar, what is I E S?
I'm not getting it, it says a lot of electrical companies called I E S, but I can't find what the acronym is.
I can ask the contractor.
Yeah. International Electrical Standards?
Integrated Electrical.
Illumination Standard, or something like that.
Illuminating Engineering Society Standard.
Is that what it goes?
Yeah, yeah, the Illuminating Engineering Society Standard.
I still haven't found that, nice.
So I think as long as you say it's compliant with the dark sky component of the code, then they can replace the one they have. If they're gonna come in and alter their lighting fixtures, they would have to come back to us.
Yes, I made that clear to the contractor, that if they're proposing any more lamp poles, that they.
Yes.
Is subject to site plan, and they need to come before you guys.
And as part of the comprehensive plan, I went around and documented night lighting in the village. And they turned their lights, all of them, off.
That's certain.
When they're closed, and it is a complete black spot on the sidewalk.
Uh-huh.
And their parking lot is completely dark after nine o'clock or whenever they close. So they shouldn't be required, I think, to at least illuminate the sidewalk in front of their building, because.
That's probably something that we can readdress when and if.
Yeah.
They come back.
I was amazed how dark it was in their parking lot. Because the only light in that neighborhood, there's a couple of streetlights, but one's in front of the falafel place.
Yeah.
And there's one further down in the middle of the block, and they're both behind trees, so they don't provide much light on the sidewalk anyway.
It'd be nice to have lit sidewalks.
Yes. It's amazing, if you go out and really look how bad our sidewalks are lit in the summer when the leaves are out, because we have these forty-foot poles, and they're up lighting the tops of trees, not the sidewalk. Yes, all over the village. So the comprehensive planning committee has an alternative lighting scheme to get rid of these existing streetlights, but then who knows how long that's gonna take.
Two weeks.
So are we okay here, do we have to pass anything, or?
Uh, no, I just wanted to clear with you guys before it got installed, and then we're getting letters saying, you know, I've got a, you know, a glare.
Yeah, well, as long as.
In my back window.
Right, but we've got the code, and as long as the department, the Z E O, when you look at it and satisfy yourselves, that is dark skies standard compliant, which is our code, not some made-up vendor naming, then we're fine with it.
Okay.
Ryan, I mean, this bill is proposing forty watt equivalent bulbs at this point in, in these lights, and then if they get the refractor or do any frosting.
So that's now.
These things.
That's.
But I mean, that's pretty dim.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They went like way in the other direction.
So that's now.
Forty watts getting out, this light's gonna be light.
No, it's always here.
A fifteen watt bulb.
Yeah. That was now, before, they were proposing like an eighty watt, or it was some, some crazy high number of wattage.
Yeah, I guess I'm just responding with John saying, I, I think they might have gone too far in the other direction, because these might not give off much light at all.
Okay.
Um, just, just pointing it out.
I can give, is it six hundred lumens, is that like a sixty watt?
Yeah.
LED? I can offer that as a scale of between forty and sixty watt, or the equivalent of a six hundred lumens L, LED.
I think six hundred lumens would be the minimum.
Yeah, because these are, these are four fifty and they're forty watt equivalent, so, yeah, I would think a minimum.
Sixty watt.
Yeah.
Okay.
Especially because it looks like the lens is either confrusted or they get frosted over time. And then they do, I don't know if they're planning on them, they have these little refractors to make it look like an old gas lamp, like a mesh that goes around the bulb, so it's like, it's like almost like a candle up there.
I'll let them know.
But what, you know, at some point, when CBS comes in, I mean, that parking lot is atrocious. I mean, we owned the house behind it, and not only the pole falling over and hanging, but, you know, the snowplow's pushed all of the, you know, the curb stops.
Yeah.
To a pile, and there's just years of road sand and salt back there that's been pushed up and trash. You know, the trash enclosure's always open, and the squirrels are always in the dumpster. Can't tell me how many Peppa McPatty wrappers we would find in the yards and stuff, because they throw away their candy when it expires, and the squirrels go in and take it and scatter it all over the village. There was actually a point where we were collecting those wrappers in a trash bag, and we would bring them to John Fenton in a clear trash bag every so often, and just say, like, this was, this was this week's haul. So, I mean, when they do eventually come in, you know, that parking lot does, does need some conversation, I think, about the way it's maintained, as you mentioned, the bollards, they're sort of hit by cars and snowplows and bent, and plastic coverings coming off and stuff, so.
Just one other comment, we have nothing else?
No, I'm not on this, I had.
Speaking of lighting and code, I noticed that the T Fresh has a neon sign in their window.
Is it the, is it the, is it the, of the display window or on the back wall?
It's, no, it's in the window above the front door, it's in the glass panel above the front door. It says O P E M, and neon.
We'll get a letter.
Who's that?
T Fresh.
Where are they?
Crox.
Used to.
The beer place down there.
Used to be where Grand Cruz.
Grand Cruz, okay. Yeah, we shouldn't, like, give the precedence for an open sign.
Yeah, and then somebody else will. The hat, the hat store has what appears to be a neon sign, and I'm, and I'm, you know, a boarder, have you ever noticed the hat store?
Yeah.
There's a border, there's a colored neon string light around the front window. And I've always been waiting for someone else to say, well, I'll put one on my window too then, because, you know. But I guess we haven't heard anything else from them.
No, the Z E O looked into it, and businesses are allowed decorative lighting.
Decorative lighting?
Yeah, yes.
Wow.
That's not a sign.
No, okay. There you go.
I just had two quick things, one is, I sent around that affidavit, that was the affidavit that Justin brought in a couple of months ago, and said this is the thing we're now requiring. People, the signs when they apply for a building permit that certifies that they're aware that it's the conditions of building permit, but it's also what the planning board and zoning board have talked to them about, that they have to satisfy for a C E O. So I punched it up a little bit, that was one of the constructive things that came out of the executive session, that, you know, if we've made sure that they're honed in on having to adhere to what's discussed in their approvals and what their conditions are, it might prompt them to come back in a situation like we had at Chestnut Street. So I stopped short of saying, you know, I couldn't find a way to elegantly word in there, you know, if you decide to tear down a whole building, you need to come back for a demolition permit. But I felt like it was implicit enough in there, but certainly looking to.
Did you see David Miller's?
I saw that.
Comment and whatnot, okay.
And he basically said, make the architect and the general contractor a party to the agreement, you can't certify that, that you've made them aware. Which, you know, that would solve the situation we had with the lavender fence, right? Where they said the contractor did one thing and didn't know the rules allegedly, and, you know, it wasn't their fault. So that would solve to that.
I have to re-save that, Darren, because when that went out, it got to Mike, and he couldn't open it, it came in as a corrupted file.
Oh, my document?
Yeah, so I just have to re-save it and then resend it, because Mike hasn't had an opportunity to look.
I tried, but it just kept, no, we're not opening it.
Yeah, I saw a version, but it didn't have any markups.
I didn't do it in markup, I just sort of, probably shouldn't have, but I just kind of, I did a lot of reformatting.
I just didn't know if I had your version or.
Yeah, I just sort of took a crack at, like, making it fresh, which probably isn't good form, but I did a bunch of formatting, and it started to look crazy in the red lines. So.
And that requires a notary.
Yes.
Public. They, they always did, so I just kept.
Yes, that was initially a recommendation and insisted by Ken, I'm going off.
So anyway, that's why I had sent that around earlier this week, because we had talked about it as one tool we have, just to make sure people are hypersensitive to the things they discuss with us here, you know, month one, when it's month ten in their building, and they've forgotten about us.
Yeah, I wanted a little more, I've been, I've been at, I've been away for most of the last couple of weeks. I want a little more time to look at this, but it looked very good. Can we then, like at the next meeting, decide we would like this to be used and Ken to adopt it?
I think you guys have been using the old version.
Yeah.
Alright, right?
Yeah, we've been using the old version pretty much ever since, um, yeah, we used it with Mulberry, with forty-two Mulberry Street. Once the old Thompson House comes in with their building permit, we would probably use this new version if it's approved by then, and, you know, move, move forward as long as the board is comfortable with, with the version, as well as what David's input was about holding the, the builder and the architect accountable, regardless if they, you know, plead ignorance and things like that, so.
Yes, very good.
What's the maximum we can ask for escrow?
So it, it depends on the application, and it depends on residential or, or commercial. Right now, not having the fee schedule in front of me, I can do some rough math. The minimum is eight hundred and fifty, and then it, the next level that goes up, I think, it's roughly fifty-five hundred, I think. So if you did fifty-five hundred, add it to the eight fifty, you're at, you know, sixty-three, hundred, hundred and change. I mean, you guys, you, you guys don't have to stick strictly to that. I mean, you could say, we want to establish escrow for ten thousand dollars, and that would cover, you know, any legal and, and, and engineering fees. You, you don't have to stick to the fee schedule.
I mean, I've seen most towns and villages start with a lower number and then add to it, too, right? We could, if the escrow gets depleted, you can ask for more funds.
I can't remember the last time we asked for escrow.
Uh, you guys asked for escrow.
For the.
In twenty nineteen for the, for the hub.
Yeah. When was the last time?
That was pretty much the last time.
Do that for major new, new construction.
But.
And then the other thing that I just wanted to mention is eighty-six East Market Street, that's where we approved recently the window replacements, the Anderson Woodright windows.
Yeah.
I need to learn to ask better questions, because they then proceeded to do a pretty major, what seems like, interior renovation. So if you recall that application, they had run line height down the sides of the building, and they put their mini-split outdoor units on different sides of the building, and one of the arguments was, well, we, you know, in the basement, we could run it across the open floor joists, but we didn't want to open up the exterior walls to run the line sets in them.
Yeah.
But then.
They gutted the inside?
They gutted the inside, because the pile of sheet rock was, you know, pretty significant. So, you know, you have to assume that they did a pretty significant gut of the inside subsequent to that H E B A C work. So I think I learned to ask better questions in the sense of, like, what, what other projects are you planning?
Yeah.
You know, so we can sort of lead into that, right? Like, would that open the interior walls where that line set could be put in that interior wall, and therefore not on the siding in the building? So it was just one of those, when I drove by the guys carrying the sheets in, I said, ah, if I would have thought to ask that question, we might have been able to get those in the wall. Ask like, no extra cost to them, right? Like, they have the wall there, so, for whatever that's.
The windows look okay?
They look better than I thought they were going to, I've not really seen those in action.
Replace the front ones?
Yeah, yeah.
The shape.
But what, what does look so much better, though, that, you know. But what, what does look so much better, though, that, you know, the, the like aluminum storms are gone and all, so, you know, what we maybe lost in some historic detail on the windows, we probably gained in not having two or three layers of glass in front of it.
They had good, clear wood frame storm windows on the front, not on the sides, but the front, and I thought that they.
Yeah, but the.
But we can't require, we've allowed other people to do it.
Yeah.
So it's hard just to save the old glass, which is essentially what you want to do.
The word I use is crisp, it looks just a little crisper.
Yeah.
So, whether that's what history should look like or not, it just looks crisper.
Never be seen on a galloping horse, is my father used to say. Anything else?
Minutes, I, I honestly don't know where we're at, I know Jeff.
I thought we all caught up, except maybe the last one.
Ones.
No, well, we got, this week, we got the one, the January seventh amended minutes in the email, which looked good to me, we had talked, so what happened with the January seventh, many meetings ago, I had made some comments, but you needed some more time because it was a big meeting and you wanted to look some more, so we left it at, let's come back to this in the future, and what happened was the amended minutes that we received were just, had my comments in them, which of course, I'm happy with, but, but, so there's that one, there's the January seventh, and you thought there was a second one there?
Well, I think January seventh, I, I remember getting comments into those two after we had that, it was a big meeting, and I think we did it, but then, I show is, we have opened still to review January seventeenth and February twenty-first, are the, I think the two we have.
I think Jeff means January seventeenth.
January seventeenth, okay.
Because we didn't need January seventh.
Yeah, okay, then it was, yeah, January seventeen.
Seventeenth.
But I thought two twenty-one sounds familiar, I thought we.
You, yeah, that's, that's been approved.
Okay, so that one I just.
March seventh has not been approved, yeah.
March seventh? Oh gee, come on, jeez. Where are we?
All right, so February twenty-first is, you just sent that as these were the ones that were approved.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that one I can just throw away. And then the January seventeenth, so then, Jeff, you're right then, that's the one where Elijah Bender came in for the change of use, and we had a lot of conversations around the bus stop and the crosswalk and the drainage, and what some of the exterior brick details and things were, attack units and such, so I probably do still need to put my notes into that one. Well, that's one less thing I have to do than I thought, so that's great.
Motion adjourned.
I'll second that.
Follows the table?
Aye.